Hi, I'm Mary Kirk Cresspin. And I'd like to welcome you all to our May 26, 2020 City Council meeting for the City of Lamar. Over the last few months, we've had a lot of different changes. And it's been hectic going back and forth with all these changes for the pandemic. One thing I wanted to point out, though, is that, you know, over the last few weeks, things have slowly started to release. We now have some of our retail merchants downtown that are open. And as of tomorrow, I'm happy to say that restaurants will be open with a limited capacity, but they'll be open. So I'm very excited to go out and get some dinner with the family again and to enjoy that. All of these are happening, and the releases are happening because we've all done our part in trying to keep and prevent this virus from spreading. We've all worked hard and tried to do what we can to keep this pandemic under control. And most of all, we've all worked hard to try to keep the pressure off of our hospital system so that we can handle it if anything comes up. It's also given them some time to get ready, to prepare for this. As of right now, there's 12 cases in the Prowers County, and only one of them have been hospitalized. So that, to me, says that we actually have been doing a really good job over the last few months. And I want to thank our community members for doing everything that they can to help. I know a lot of it's been up to ourselves and our own self-responsibility. And I appreciate everybody taking that responsibility on and taking this serious. So thank you very much. And however you've done it in your own way, I appreciate your efforts in trying to help minimize the effects of this pandemic and to help keep our community strong. With that said, I'd like to start the meeting with our invocation. Manuel, would you start with the invocation?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all that you do. While we are grateful for our community and the health and well-being of our community. Lord, we just pray blessings over Prowers County and City of Lamar. And as we meet tonight, Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom and discernment over the decisions that we make. Lord, bless our time tonight and each of the members who are participating in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Anne Marie, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Jill Gonzalez.
Here.
Rafael Rodriguez.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins. Kirk Cresspin.
Here.
Oscar Riley.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Steve Kill.
Here.
Kristen McCray.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay. On the consent agenda, were there any items that anybody felt that need to be removed or voted on separately? Has everybody had a chance to review them?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. The next item on the agenda is the audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and it's at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone that would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Is there anybody online that would like to speak or that has questions that's not on the agenda?
Kirk, it's worth noting we're live Facebook and YouTube right now.
Great.
So we're both.
I know the last meeting, there was some confusion because we were just on YouTube rather than Facebook, and everybody was looking forward to seeing it on Facebook. So it'll be great to have it back on Facebook again.
Our production managers remedied that problem.
Great. Do you have any questions that came up, Martha?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move ahead with our city council liaison reports. Does any of you have any liaison reports?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Go forward. On 5:12, we discussed possible tournaments in the future. We gave a one handicap flag that's for a disability so the golfer in the golf cart can go closer to whoever. We made the Toro Agreement Restrictor System. And they discussed the celebration wall. That's like a memorial wall where members have donated a lot towards the golf course, and they've earned it. And then on 5:20, airport board meeting. The last meeting we had was September 25th. It took a long time. We're gonna have a flying lunch for a group of 15. The Yaks will supposedly be here in September. The Ag flying supposedly October. They need to replace the fuel tank on the mower. And then they had a list of things they'd like to have the airplane. Number one is a radio shop for airplane repair. A paint shop and self-service. Self-service is probably likely. The other two big investments, they would do a boom in business according to the airport bags. We discussed master plan with JAVIation, $335,000. FAA, FAA will cover that. And it has to be reviewed. It has to be with, the reviewers got to agree with them within 10% of what they estimate. And the FAA will cover that. I think that's about it. Steve was there. Anything else about that?
No, you did a pretty good job. The master plan is quite expensive, but it's absolutely mandatory.
Yeah.
Once we have that, then we can actually start making some more improvements. But unfortunately, it's one of those things. But like Oscar said, good news is the FAA is gonna cover all the costs, which is nice.
They still want people who use the crosswind runway to let them, write them a note or something, say how important that runway is. Because FAA will not cover it unless they really see a need. The main runway, no problem, it's that crosswind. And out there, you need a crosswind runway. There's a plane out there taking off and landing. Did you see him? Kind of walking.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. There were a couple of them during the board meeting that were taking off and landing. And the board meeting, we kind of stopped, and you would just kind of watch the plane because there was a big wind coming in now.
And that's it. Okay. Are there any questions for Oscar? Are there any other council liaison reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the city administrator report. Just as a reminder, Steve, did you want to add that during your, or discuss that? Main Street.
Ground engineering.
Ground engineering. Okay. Just wanted to make sure you had that on your list.
Yes, I do. Once again, it looks like we're gonna have to cancel our community breakfast. So, just so everybody knows. Flag Lake's coming up, June 14th. Probably one of the biggest things to happen over the last week or so is the Welcome Center. The state of Colorado pooled all of our funding for the Welcome Center. So, sat with Kristen, took a look at the money. And we're going to keep the Welcome Center going and hopefully open it here by June 1st. And at least until the state of Colorado makes a determination on funding again. And our contract renewal is July 1st, I believe, if I remember correctly. So hopefully by then, there'll be some determination by the state whether we can move forward or we can't, or we're gonna have to move on our own, or what have you. This affected five Welcome Centers throughout the state. So that was probably one of the most significant things that happened. I've had a chance to meet with Leslie over there. She's really looking forward to opening. The Welcome Center is ready. It's definitely ready to open. I just hope that we can work some kind of agreement with the state and we can get our funding back in place. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about the Welcome Center.
With their funding not in place anymore, are we picking up the payroll expenses for the one individual over there? Because I know several of them are volunteers. Is that correct?
That is accurate, yes. We are going to have to pick up about $7,000 and some change over.
A month?
Well, no, no, until the end of June.
When we'll have an answer on.
When we should have an answer by the end of June as to what the state's gonna do. Right.
Is that due to the state's shortfall in their budget?
Yeah, they had said that they needed to shore up some of the funding because of the unemployment and the various expenses through COVID. So they've been taking, doing cutbacks. That was one of the ones that has affected Lamar. Another one that has affected Lamar or that will affect Lamar is our Main Street project from Park South that's been delayed. They, we had to discuss that, and Steve and I had worked on that for a couple of days with the Department of Transportation to ensure that when we did do our water project down Main Street, that it was gonna be resurfaced and covered and not left barren for the next couple of years until they get their funding for the concrete. So we did get it worked out, and they are gonna do a white coat from Savage South to where it meets up with the concrete. A white coat is just resurfacing with concrete is what my understanding is. But from Park Street to Savage Street, they're gonna put that off for now, which saved them quite a bit of money. So, sorry, we didn't, you didn't have that on your list, so I wanted to make sure we covered that.
No, that's fine. I have it written. I have it manually written on my list. No, I'm just kidding. But anyway, that was one of the other issues that we're having. So it's clearly, pretty clear the state's tightening their belt in areas where they feel they can. I think we can leave it at that. Like I said, it affected five Welcome Centers throughout the state. So we will, we'll see what happens. Keep everybody informed as we get more information. Our library and rec center still remain closed even with the new orders. Those are not open. I know that Kirk placed a call for the Eagles. I had talked to Oscar earlier. Our clubs are opened up, similar to restaurants. Got confirmation from Megan this afternoon that the Eagles and the Elks can't open for the steak nights and things like that where they operate like a restaurant, then they can go to 50% capacity. But on just normal nights, they still need to adhere to the 10. But the good news is they're starting to loosen up a little bit, and we can resume some of those things that I know the community really looks forward to. And we just got that this afternoon, the approval from her on that. There is no guidance yet on softball, baseball, 4th of July fireworks. We are in a holding pattern. We're still waiting. Same status. That has not eased up. Organized sports, like Mike said, the baseball, softball, I know that everybody's asking about those, and we simply don't have any guidance yet. So the answer is they are closed until the next round. The governor will then issue a new round of orders then, I believe, June 1st is when the next round is supposed to come out. So we're just kind of waiting every week or two weeks to get a new round of orders, executive orders, and then the CDPHG will then explain those and issue public health orders. So we have, that just came in, and I'm sorry about the late notice, Main Street Water Main Phase 2, we have a proposal for ground engineering. Kristen, I don't know if you received this yet, but I, it came in about 30 minutes ago. So I want to make sure I'll get Kristen one of these. It's for geotechnical, it's geotechnical and material testing. This is the same company, ground engineering, that did Phase 1. So we actually do need a vote on this tonight. If we can go ahead and add this to the agenda or just take a vote on it, this is required by CDOT.
Can we?
61385.
Move 14 to 15 and have that in before miscellaneous? Is that more free?
If we could, that would be great, yes. Several webinars and Zoom meetings we attend. One of them that was probably the most informative was members of the White House staff. We are told, and we'll see if this happens, that they are going to increase the CDBG funding nationwide by $5 billion. And specifically, a lot of our, since we're a rural community, and we meet all the requirements, we do get our allocation of CDBG funding, so we'll have to watch for that. We'll see if we actually get more money or not. So we are told we will, but again, we'll see if that happens, but.
CDBG, Andy, just start with that.
Yeah, exactly. So everybody, there's a lot of talk out there, but we, we'll see when we actually get the check. So. Main Cafe is another thing where myself and Angie will, if I can get away, but for sure, Angie's gonna be meeting an architect to the Main Cafe tomorrow at noon. And we're working on getting a proposal put together for the actual architectural services and things of that nature. And we're hoping that all of those costs are going to be grant funded. Either historical grants or DOLA grants, something like that. We're gonna work with the consultant on that, but hopefully I'll have a proposal to present to everybody shortly. Maybe the next council meeting, Angie? Within a month? We should have a proposal, so. Exactly. It's from Formworks Design Group. They're used to doing all the historical billings and things of that nature, so. Okay. I am done.
Did you, did you want to speak on the Burger King thing, or just to let people know?
Well, I guess we could. Might as well. I knew it was gonna come up tonight. We were all informed today, and a lot of the community already knows that our Burger King will be closing. It was originally supposed to close June 1st, but I believe last night is tonight. This is, this is the last night Burger King will be open. And for everybody in the community that's wondering about the long lines, apparently, Joe, you said when you came in, you guys, there was a line down Main Street? I think I heard somebody say that all the way. Maybe it was Raff, yeah. Yeah, so people, the word has spread. And so if you see the long line at Burger King, they're not giving away anything for free. This is last night.
But this is not due to the virus pandemic?
No, this has nothing to do.
Make that clear, yes.
Yeah. Says nothing to do with the pandemic. Says nothing to do with the COVID-19. This is a private matter between the franchisee and the actual owner of the property.
You know, with that in mind, you know, Dave Cooley, he's been part of our community for the last 40 years. That Burger King's been in our community for 40 years now. And Dave Cooley, Roxy Page, the manager, they've been part of the community for so many years. And I want to thank them for everything that they've done in their community. So I know this is a difficult time that it's gonna close, and I know everybody's sad about that. I hate to see them close as well. But with that in mind, they have also done a lot for our community, and I want to thank them for the years of service and for being part of it as well. So I do want to throw that in as well. Aside from that, I know there was one question that I was asked on economic development side. We have been working with the Patel's for their hotel project. And one of the questions that I've seen most often and most frequently is why did they leave that one building out there? And they're tore down everything else, and it looks so wonderful except for that one building. So since we were talking about economic development, I'll clear that up. That one building had some asbestos in there, and it was too difficult for them to demolish in a safe manner. So we had to get some specialists. They're in the middle of getting that worked out as far as getting it contracted. But once that is done, that building will also come down, and they'll fill that in. And hopefully, when that's complete, we'll be able to break ground on the new hotel that'll be going there. So it's been a fun project to work with the Patel's on as far as what they're doing, and great to see that progress happening. And hopefully, that's the beginning of many things to come in the future. Did you have anything to add on economic development side?
Well, there's a lot of things we're still working on. Hopefully, now that things are loosening up with the pandemic and some of the governor's orders are starting to loosen the state up and everywhere else, there'll be a little more interest now of, with various businesses, they're ramping up now. So hopefully, we can do that. I know that Angie's got a couple grants. Those are on the agenda tonight. So we're still forging forward with everything. Eventually, we will get back to normal at some point. So we're just keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that sooner than later.
Were there any final questions for Steve on his report? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Steve, for your report. Next item on the agenda is the DOLA Colorado Main Street Mini Grant Award Acceptance. This was initiated by Angie. Did you want to speak on it at all?
Sure.
You'll have to speak a little louder because of the distance there.
Sure. We're a Colorado designated Main Street community. And so every year, because of the level that we are with DOLA, we're at the graduate level, which is the top level, we're eligible for a $10,000 mini grant every year. And so our match to that grant is $3,335. So what DOLA has done this year is they are awarding us a five-year grant for $10,000 each year. So rather than doing a new grant application every year, they're actually doing a five-year award. So we've been awarded this five-year award, and I'm just here tonight to ask for your approval of that award, that we can have this secured for the next five years.
I'm going to say that we need to see the contract on this because of table restrictions. So and I'm sure coming from DOLA, it will have the current language in it for the attorney's review. But I think if we go ahead and accept it, it will be based on the review, and then the contract comes back to you. On both of these.
Good.
Because we can't do a five-year contract without some particular table language being in that contract. So I would like to make sure that that gets reviewed by the attorney and by Steve and I before we go ahead and have offer and assign them for that contract.
Angie?
Angie, have you seen it?
That's no big deal.
No, I haven't. It's. Oh, is our order yet? Yeah, I didn't.
They just don't have them ready yet.
Yeah. We just got the award letter, and that was it.
Right.
I've reviewed the award letter, but I just think it's really important on something like this for the contract.
Do we have to match all at once, $16,700?
No, it can be year to year. So every year it'd be the $3,000.
And we've been doing that same amount every year.
Yeah, well, I know. I didn't know that'd be one figure.
Yeah, it's been that exact same amount for, um, you can, but yeah, three or four. That's all I have for your question.
So I move we accept it as long as the, everything's correct. Our contract, as far as the language goes, is that good? Okay, we have a motion with Raff and a second with Oscar. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
That's just contingent upon attorney and staff review. Correct?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the other DOLA Colorado Main Street Scholarship Award Acceptance. Would you like to speak on that as well, Angie?
Sure. So again, it's another DOLA thing that we have, being a Colorado Main Street community. So each year, we are eligible for a certain amount of money to, to use the scholarship money to pay for some traveling expenses, primarily to the National Main Street Conference, which is around the country in different locations every year, as well as the state managers' conferences, usually in November with just the state managers. And so they're offering the same thing they would like to award us, this opportunity near these funds for the next five years at $2,200 a year. So it's just securing that money so that we have it over the next five years. And so this is just asking for your guys' approval to accept the award. And I'll ask the same of DOLA about the table language and from the contract. So we'll bring that back. Just asking for approval of the award letter.
Make a motion to accept with the same conditions.
Second.
As a previous. Okay, we have a motion with Oscar and a second is with Anne Marie. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right. Agenda item number 10, City Audit Extension Request. This is brought to us by Kristen. Would you like to speak on that?
Yes. Due to the COVID situation and also our late engagement with our current offer, COVID has prevented him from being onsite to the people that he had contracted before us. So it's pushing his schedule out some. So we visited, and we both thought it was in our best interest to go ahead and apply for an extension just to make sure that we get it covered. It's normally due July 31st to the state auditor's office, so I'm completely fine. So I went ahead and, it's an online process, so I got on there and submitted it. We were approved an extension until September 30th, but it does require an approval then of the council and approving the mayor to sign the extension. So that's basically what this is. It just gives us a little bit more time. In doing that, we did get the audit scheduled. So, and you can see in the commentary that he'll be here onsite from June 29th to 9th to the right of the audit.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
A motion with Oscar and a second with Anne Marie. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have item number 11, Southeast Networks and Support LLC Lease Agreement. This was with Linda and Steve. This is an approval of a renewal. Is that correct?
This is for our little small tower. And Linda, just, we know that it needs to be extended, so we didn't know what the pleasure of everybody would be. I would, can't imagine we wouldn't. So it's not much money at all. It's not our big towers.
Internet providers.
Right.
And he has a small tower out there.
At the water tubes?
By the water tanks that sits on city land. And his lease has $20 annually plus the $25 for each antenna. And he pays, I invoice him every year.
How many years has he been out there, Linda? Or they?
Since 2011.
Okay. Has he subletting any part of that antenna out to anybody else?
He has not.
No?
That's why it's so reasonable. It's not one of the major providers, the little local.
I'll read you through some of the user agreements, their lease agreement there. But I saw that on some of the, what the less he can do there, like required and so forth like that.
I move we approve.
I'll second it. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the Southeast, Southeast Networks and Support LLC Lease Agreement. Are there any final questions? These amounts have been the same since 2011?
They have.
Any other final questions?
I just want to clarify the term on this. Five-year term.
It is a five-year term.
I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, five-year term.
Are they compatible rates? I mean.
Well.
I mean, because we're only going to charge them five per hour, isn't that right?
No, it's a $500 transfer fee. So if he was, if he were to sell the tower to somebody else, then there would be a $500 transfer fee. He pays $200 yearly.
To the City of Lamar?
To the city.
Okay. So I guess my question is just that, is that a competitive amount for what he has?
For him?
A tower his size?
I would say yes. If it was Sprint, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, somebody like that, I would suggest several thousand a month as opposed to $200 a year. I mean, I, those tower lease agreements, those land leases. I mean, I, those tower lease agreements, those land leases, I've done many times. And depending on their user base around and the need of that tower, you could get, you can get a substantial amount for those. But something like this, this is just, this is our, this is a local.
It's the smallest tower out there. And like I said, it's just for, he provides an internet service locally. I don't even know how it's structured out.
And is this agreement, the same agreement that we've had?
Yes.
Language-wise?
Yes.
And Lance, if you look at a little further on the waiver.
Language is fine from my perspective. I was curious on like word position on that amount that's been the same since.
Now, if another local businessman wanted to put a tower up out there as well on the property, is that possible or would that not be since there's already one out there?
Well, there's many towers out there.
For internet service? Because that's what we're talking about now.
So there is a tower out there that has internet service on it. It's just a bigger corporation. So I would assume that they would come and ask if we would do a land lease for them? I, I guess.
I guess where I was.
That's your expertise.
I guess where I was getting is we've got one out there, small local businessman, correct? You're saying he's local. And my thought was, is this going to tie up or prevent somebody else from wanting to do the same thing on the city property? And from what you just answered, I'm assuming no.
No, so I've been out there and what, if I remember correctly, what he leases is something about the size of this room, just a little piece of land. It's tiny.
Gotcha, yeah.
As long as we have the ground available, anybody could approach us and ask for a lease, a land lease. Now, if it was Verizon, we would, the agreement would be about this thick.
And, yes.
And we would have, and the biggest thing is the dollars is working out.
Well, on staff, well, yes.
Because we have a lot of property out there, so they look elevation, they look for elevation. That's the key to it. So if somebody came along, we would be back in front of you with an agreement, so.
And that tower's tiny compared to the other ones out there.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Do we know what his service base is?
I do not know what his service base is. I don't know how many customers he has.
That's what I think. It's pretty. You know, we do the, we lease. We lease a lot of land out to different entities for lease towers. And it doesn't take a whole lot of space. I think the only time that we really denied one was when it was, they were wanting to do a 60-foot tower downtown Lamar or in the middle of Lamar, and we did decline that one. It was 100 feet.
So it was 100 feet?
Yeah. So it was a very large tower in the middle of Lamar, and we declined that. But aside from that, we've always tried to work with anybody that wants to come in and do a lease. Because it's not so much about making money off of this as it is having it spur our economy and have that other after effect of more business, more off service offerings, things of that nature. And that's kind of where I was getting. I just didn't want to leave it locked up where nobody else could come in. I'd like to see somebody else if possible, you know, if future other businesses come in as well. And that wouldn't be the case. We don't still operate to everybody, so.
Yeah, it's not exclusive. Gotcha.
So and then one thing I guess I could throw in there while we're talking about that and these land leases. I had a question earlier this, earlier last week about some upgrades on one of these towers that had happened over the last few weeks. One of the antennas had some equipment upgrades done, and there was some questions of why the city did counsel to discuss it or do anything like that. Just like with this lease here, we're approving the rental of the property with the tower on it, and they're renting it to put a tower on it. Now, whether he puts 5G wireless or if he puts a mini Wi-Fi tower or whatever he puts on there, we're just approving the lease of the property that the tower will be on. So what they upgraded to and how they do it, as long as it's approved by the FCC, that's really not our realm to.
Do you know if that upgrade was to 5G?
I think that was, and that's what the question was. Because we really don't, whether it's a 5G or a 25G, it's, it's an upgrade with the technology that they're doing, and we just go along with what they're doing unless, if there's an issue, when we go to renew, we can look at that and renew it at that point. So that was just one thing I wanted to throw out there. But this one is just a standard Wi-Fi, which is like the kind of Wi-Fi that's in your home, maybe a little bit stronger. So I don't think that there's any major bandwidth issues or competition issues or anything like that. What would the council like to do?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept it, I suppose.
Okay. We have a second?
Anne Marie and Brock, you have it already.
Oh, you already did. That's right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, so that was just on our final questions. So are there any last final questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Jerry, did you say aye? I think so. She's been on there. Yep, she did. So motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item. Consider a revised proposal for Ivor Hill regarding 700 East Parmaner Street. That was brought in by Steve.
Yeah, this was, this was actually a late arrival, and I apologize for that. Ivor Hill was back, was in front of us back in February. And as you guys will recall, everybody will, we went to court. We received an order to tear the house down. Ivor Hill said, well, can you wait, hold off on that? I'm going to buy that. And everybody said, okay, we'll give you it till the end of May to get your paperwork in order. He's come back. He has said in an email, and I think everybody should have a copy of that, that he is going to be closing on the property by May 31st, which is the deadline. He has asked for six weeks to tear down the outbuildings. And when I say outbuildings, I mean the accessory buildings. And he would like to fence the property in, and he would like to remodel the property. I know that, I don't believe we have an issue with remodeling that property. But I would ask that his timeframes be tightened up a little bit. There's no reason it should take him six weeks to start demolition of those buildings. He should be required to start that right away. And he should be required to at least start making the exterior improvements to eliminate, you know, the blighted look and things of that nature. Interior-wise, it'll take him a while to remodel it. That's fine. We have no problem with that. And we've asked, I've asked Lance, I've talked to Lance about this, and whatever's decided, we would like to actually drop that into a written agreement, so there's no misunderstanding on the part of either party.
And timeline.
Well, that's part of the agreement. So there's no misunderstanding. So I didn't know what the feelings were of the council. This came in front of you in February, and by motion, you extended that, which was fine. So I thought that it had to come back in front of this group right here, so you could make a determination on how you wanted to proceed.
Because previously, you were saying it was going to cost too much to remodel.
Well, that's changed.
Well, from the letter that I am reading here, he's only talking about repainting the outside residential unit to make it aesthetically better, and then only erecting a six-foot fence around just the residential unit itself only. Now, are we going to require it to go out so many feet from the residential unit? I mean, because there's a big area there that we can think of. Well, I'm only going to put a five-foot fence or five foot from the unit instead of making it around the whole entire property. And then, I mean, well, I agree with the timeline units, but what about, you know, the construction there and so forth as well?
Well, that's why we need a written agreement, so there's no misunderstanding. And I didn't know what the feelings of the council were. And that's why I told Lance, don't draft anything yet. Let's see what everybody's feelings are, and then we can drop it into a written agreement. But I think there should be a total, I think if he's going to remodel it, he's going to remodel it. A coat of paint is not going to do it. Obviously, you guys, everybody's seen the picture, so.
Well, I agree, the coat of paint's not going to, not going to cut it down.
The fence typically would be around the perimeter of the property. That's typically what it would be. My understanding was, I thought he only wanted to put a fence up there construction to secure it.
Well, it didn't say that in the letter.
Well, that's, that's kind of what, but again, I think that's why the devil's in the details, and we need something in writing. So if we get some direction, you know, if generally this is okay, but you want all these specifics taken care of, we can work that out and come back to you with a written agreement. But I didn't know, are you going to approve his request and work with him, or do you want?
Well, we want to work with him, for sure.
Stick to the gun, so, yeah.
Ultimately, you know, we just don't want it just sitting idle again, and he purchases it and then it just keeps going.
I totally, I completely agree.
Have it sitting there for another five to six years with the same look. But now I bought the property, so we're just going to let it sit there, and we'll have another Troy Hotel on our hands.
So what kind of timeframe?
Well, I agree with the demolition to start immediately. You know, we need something to take place.
Right.
So should we do a motion to authorize Steve to negotiate out and bring back an offer to the council for final approval?
I think that would be appropriate. And now, if I get a little bit of feedback here, and I know everybody wants to move.
Yes.
Get moving on it quickly. Now, we have something we could tell them, listen, the council discussed this. They're not going to entertain these, the whole idea is to make the community look better. We're not going to sit on it for the next several years.
We ran it one grand already, time-wise.
Correct.
Yes. Because what, so put a definite date on there if it's not started or something completed by that. The city will do, we will build the city, or build, the city will build it.
We should be able to have something back to everybody here within.
The next meeting?
Well.
You think two weeks is enough?
Is two weeks enough, Lance?
Yeah, I think so. If we get some direction on what kind of terms I want.
Right.
We want that to go, and what all you want to be done. I think it's important also because that judgment states that it was to be done by May 31st, and now we're, they're closing on that date around that timeframe. So there's no way they're getting it done before then. So I think having an agreement would be important for showing that we're not waiting that timeframe.
Right. Because the judgment allowed us to tear that down. We're technically going to demolish it and clean it up ourselves and get rid of it. And that's why we did the judgment. So if we're not going to do that, I agree, we need to put a very tight timeframe on it. I don't know if August the first or something, or July the first, or I don't know what you were thinking.
Well, I think he needs, I want to see the accessory buildings tore down immediately. I want him to see him start those within a week. And I want to see him pull a permit for remodeling. I want, we have to see movement.
And not just, not just start dates, but.
Yeah, that's the key.
Completion dates. We want some completion dates, especially for the tear down.
Well, the tear down, we can, we can definitely hold him to some completion dates. And I think it's important for us to get a remodel, exterior remodel completion date of this year. Now, the interior, that can take time. That's fine. But if he gets the exterior done and cleans up the property, then at least the neighborhood will start looking better. I mean, just like anybody remodeling the inside of their house, you can't see what's going on there. But I would definitely want the exterior done, is what I wanted to recommend to everybody. That can't wait. And if everybody's generally in agreement with that, we can sit down with Ivor Hill and try to work this out and bring, bring something back to you in writing.
So we want to make a motion on that, then?
Say we make a motion to have Steve work out the details and bring it back to the table and get something approved by the council.
Okay.
So we can move forward.
Okay, you made the motion. Oscar seconded. Are there any final questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, agenda item number 13 is to consider waiver of public hearing process for liquor license modification of premises during the COVID-19 pandemic. Of course, during these pandemic times, there's been some adjustments to the way some of the restaurants have been able to do business. And Steve, can you voice that? That was yours?
Yeah, this is, our county health department is, as recently as today, received a lot of questions from restaurants about what can I do? Can I make up the difference in business by moving outside? Can I do, there's a lot of just uncertainty here. And I got a feeling that we are going to have a certain number of our restaurants request a waiver of their premise license, liquor license, meaning that they're going to want to move outside and do more of a, and make up the difference in the capacity that they're going to be held to, 50% inside, and try to serve outside to somewhat operate at full capacity. So that typically, and I was talking to Kyle about this, our chief, he said that that typically was done by a public hearing process, not because it's required by the state, Linda said, but it's required locally here. And I didn't know if there would be any interest in perhaps waiving that public hearing process only during the COVID pandemic timeframe that we're in.
So as of tomorrow, though, we're saying that the product will be able to open to?
50%.
Right. Now, with a lot of our, I mean, some of the restaurants, I think, already have some outdoor seating. Places, Quiznos does, La Savage and.
Is there more restaurants that have alcohol?
If they want to serve food outside and somebody would like a drink, they have to be able to do that outside as well.
Their missions is enclosed, so they already have their license.
But it's an outdoor, they've got their license.
But like La Spri's, they don't have an outdoor area designated, so they didn't get a license with an outdoor designation. So.
And I guess I would say, one of the things is, outdoor service in Lamar, Colorado is really not a pleasant thing. The wind howls, it's 100 degrees, you know? I really don't see where people are going to be like, yeah, let's eat outside, or, you know.
Now, is this going to be temporary fix for it? I mean, not a permanent dilt for these outside facilities?
So that's the challenge right there is because, let's say La Spri's, for instance, if they want to do this temporary permit, and they have to wait for our next meeting, and then they have to wait again for us to get it approved and do public hearing and advertise it and all this, by the time we get it approved, the pandemic's over.
Well, like the mission, for example, they may want to expand their outside area to help with their business as well.
Right.
Further into their.
You know, into their parking area and all that, you know, and they have ample parking there. So it's just something that I know is going to come up and.
Here's one thing I want, I would like to see, though, is actually put a date on there, not, not just put on there until the pandemic's over, because really, who knows?
I guess they could reapply.
When it's going to be over.
Oh, I would, I would photograph, I would, like, into some Labor Day.
I, I'd wait by the fourth month.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, if, if you want to go the summer, you know, I would say Labor Day, if you want to do date specific on there where these requests would not require public hearings.
And once, once our.
There is a date in here. It's 120 days. So it can't, it can't go past 120 days.
Now, is this as well for bars or just restaurants?
So that's just for restaurants?
Just restaurants, okay.
Well, that's a good question. Because are we going to, are we going to come back here?
Because we have open bars that do serve food.
Eventually, they're going to open up.
Correct.
So if the bars open up, what if they want to put an outside area so they can actually start functioning too?
So when we do a motion, we should do it for restaurants only, classifying. And then when bars come.
Well, you determine that, though, if they offer food service.
Well, I think you're going to have to consider the premise liquor licenser, licensure of everybody, not just one or the other. We only really have two bars. You know, we have Desiree's, we have the Roost, so.
So our statute doesn't have anything on modifications. It just lists new licenses, renewals, and I think denials in our statute, in our ordinance. So I don't know where modifications fit in with that, because if it's a new removal and needs, we have to have a public hearing.
Per modification of premise, per state liquor enforcement, we do not have to have a public hearing. I can get you the document.
We looked into this, and this is a local rule we have, that we require a public hearing for a modification. But I'm just, I just wanted to bring this up, because I know that our business community at some point is going to, we're going to be hit with this question.
So it's not an ordinance, is it, or are we just practicing it?
Well, no, it was the, Linda, you said it was the requirement of the council.
It was a public hearing. To hold a public hearing for modification of premise and a special event permit.
Right.
Yeah, right. Well, and it's, that was the whole purpose, was the special events and the modification, because we did have, like, Buzzard Roost doing the road jam, and that made a modification. The Oktoberfest that had the special event. So on those bigger special events and modifications, we did want to scrutinize those a little bit tighter.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense. But with this one, there's really not time for them to plan the event, and this is, you know, the next 16 days.
And I think, you know, with some of that, how do we regulate, you know, once an accommodating space, you know, especially with, like, Breezes. They got sidewalk, and that's it.
Well, Angie had actually talked to Breezes, and they don't think they're going to need to expand on the sidewalk, right, Angie?
That's what they're thinking, but they still want to know what the guidelines are going to be, so that if for some reason that they do.
They want to put a couple tables out or something?
Well, and I think one of the things we've done for the special events and modifications, we've always had a fenced area. So it's enclosed, so that people can't take off or leave, or kids can't come in and grab the bottle off the table or anything like that. So I think that would have to be a requirement. And like Mission, they have a little fenced area already. But on some of these other restaurants that don't, we probably have to get some kind of a barrier.
Well, the.
Is there a restriction?
Well, the question.
Does the city have any restrictions of you blocking the sidewalk, though?
Well, yeah, Kyle.
We can waive that, yeah.
Yeah, Kyle sent that to me, I have that in front of me here, Kristin, so yeah. I guess the only question I had was, it wasn't so much to circumvent any of the process, or not require them to submit a drawing, and let Kyle look at it, I'll take a look at it. Eventually, it would come here, it's simply that public hearing component. So we didn't have to hold that hearing and put them off.
Correct, they're still.
And we can make decisions quicker, that's all.
And it's 120 days.
Per this, yes, it's 120 days.
If you feel like 16 would be more appropriate, we can do that locally.
That's why I said, we could just go right to Labor Day for now, and then if this goes past Labor Day, well, who knows what's. That gives us June, July, August.
Did you have any questions, Martha, or, I saw you looking over. Nobody's asking questions or anything?
But on different topics, but we can wait.
We'll wait till the next meeting.
Yeah, I was more concerned with just the public hearing component, not that they would have, be able, we would waive the requirements, like Kirk was saying about, you know, give us a drawing, how big is it going to be? Where's it going to be located? Make sure there's no traffic or sidewalk issues.
They still will have to fill out the correct application with all the documentation. The only thing that we're asking is that the public hearing be suspended.
During the COVID. So we could actually do a motion.
For 90 days.
For 90 days, in lieu of the public hearing, we're authorizing the city administrator, the city clerk, and the police chief to make a determination on these temporary modifications. That's, I think, and if they went by those guidelines, that, between the three of them.
In line with state statutes.
Can accord, right. Paul said, I'll move to that.
Second.
Okay, I'm just trying to limit it and get it prangled up here, so that way it's more understandable. So we have a motion and a second to allow the city administrator, the city clerk, and the police chief to determine these in lieu of a public hearing on a temporary basis for 60 days only.
And we would all sign off on them.
Ninety days, sorry, 90 days, according to Colorado statutes, right?
So you're not requiring it come back to council then for approval?
Actually, we might need to push it back or push it more.
That's what they were saying.
I would still be bringing the application and everything to council for approval.
No, that's not what Kirk said.
That's what I was saying.
Well, I was saying that you guys can approve it.
Yeah.
Before, so that we can get things moving, so they can open their restaurants.
So they don't have to wait two weeks.
Right, for the next meeting.
But it still has to be a public hearing.
Yeah, see, I just.
The only process that I wanted to delay, or to waive, was the public hearing. So if we get, if we get an application in tomorrow, it's going to take a little bit for us to, for myself to review it, and for the police department to review it. I can go ahead and submit it to the state at that time, and then we can bring it to council at the next council meeting. I wasn't asking, because the state still has to review it.
I mean, we're going to move it as fast as we can.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
If somebody requests it. And it's reasonable, it's a reasonable request.
Well, I like that thought as well, because we don't want to cut off our sidewalks from the pedestrians and so forth, just so the restaurant can sit as many tables out there as they want.
Does the state have to approve this?
The state does have to approve it.
Okay. So do we need to modify?
It would be, it would be.
They're allowing us to.
I think the motion would be to, simply to authorize a waiver of the public hearing process requirement for a period of 90 days, and that's it. We would still bring it back to you, though.
Can we do 120 days? Because that would, 120 days will include September or Labor Day.
You can do however many days you would like, draft, that's fine. Yeah, 120 is fine.
You only want to give it the temporary modification of premise for this, not all the other public hearings.
Or just for restaurants during the COVID.
Right.
Just that modification of premise, right.
The restrictions get lifted by the state, then this gets canceled.
Well, if the restrictions, if the restrictions got lifted by the state in a month, at the very next council meeting, I would say lift. Get rid of that, just let's go right back to normal.
No more outside.
I mean, and then that would be approved by case-by-case basis by the council.
Okay, well, that really got a little confusing.
I think in simplicity, it's just waiving the public hearing.
For a period of 120 days, right.
On restaurants during restaurant modifications during the pandemic.
Okay, restaurant and bar, or just restaurant?
Just restaurant.
I think we're going to, when the bar, when they open up the bars, I think we're going to probably see.
A different one.
Some different.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking, I just wanted, I know that that is going to be an issue. As soon as the governor does something with that, we're going to have that issue in front of us as well. I can tell you, it's going to be an issue.
I say we cross that line, Mike, when we get there, yes. Because they can apply for a modification.
No, I just, like you said, I just want everybody to be aware that that's going to become an issue, I'm sure.
Okay.
I see Kyle shaking his head, yes, it will.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Modify your motion?
Modify it to temporarily stop the, I don't know.
Hold their hearing.
Suspend, suspend, yeah.
The public hearings for 120 days for the modifications of restaurants only for their alcohol joints.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Motion should have been modified the second, with the second?
Yes.
Anne Marie was the second. Are you in agreement with that?
Any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I didn't see Jerry say aye. I think she did. All right, motion passes, moving on to the next item, which is item number 14. We included the one item that Steve wanted to add in for ground engineering. Do you want to add anything else to that, Steve? We've already kind of talked about that.
We've kind of talked about it, it's a requirement, we have no choice. We have to do the geotechnical part, we, Arthur, you authorized the project. Ground engineering, if you look at the very last page, you'll see a letter from JVA. They reviewed the quotes, this is who they're recommending. They did our, this was our firm that we used on phase one. I don't see any reason why not to go with them.
So we're going to have to come up with the $61,385?
It's going to be part of the grant, it was already in there.
Okay.
Kristin gets more grabs.
Not in this phase, I think this phase is covered.
Right. Phase three is where we're struggling right now. That's a tough one, we don't have a grant for that yet.
Are there any questions from the council?
This is just to do all the testing, I can.
Correct. The geotechnical work, right.
You already have the contract under the case.
Make the motion to do it.
So is this a contract that you're looking at? I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
It came 30 minutes ago, Lance, no. Could you approve it contingent upon the attorney's review? How about that?
That sounds great.
Yeah, we do that a lot.
Let's do that. So we have a modification of the motion to approve the ground engineering contract with contingent on the review of the city attorney.
Yes, right.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'm the second.
So we have a motion by Oscar and a second by Anne Marie. Any final questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Lance, just drop us a note when you get a chance to read it. You don't have to read it right now, I mean, it could be done tomorrow, it's fine. It came in 30 minutes ago. It was right before the meeting, so.
And then the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous. Were there any questions that we wanted to answer for people online? Any questions?
There's a couple.
Okay.
Somebody wanted an update on the variants, if you have one.
Okay. We actually had our, every Tuesday and Friday, Steve, myself, Kyle Miller, the chief, and Jeremy Burkhardt, the fire chief, meet with Megan Hill. And we have our emergency operations team meeting. We did have that meeting earlier today, we did ask Megan what the status was on the variants request. We, she was expecting an answer last week, and it has not arrived. She was told that she should have an answer by Saturday, she did not get one yet. So as of right now, we are still waiting, and it's still pending. Unfortunately, I'm sure the state's been inundated with many, many requests, so, but that is the status, we're still waiting.
Several people wanted to know an estimated time on community building being opened, the pool, and the senior center.
Steve?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I have to take that one? Well, the answer is, we don't know. Every single week, we ask the same questions of our county health department, and it's not fair to expect that our county health director will know the answer to these questions. These are strictly determined by the governor. We ask every week, we do not have a timeframe. I think I said earlier that there's no timeframe on baseball or softball, they haven't addressed fireworks. The pool is to remain closed, the community center is to remain closed, the library is still to remain closed. I, we're as frustrated as everybody else, but we do not have a timeframe from the state yet. I'm sorry to report that, but.
Somebody had asked, any news on the feasibility study for the covered pool?
That has not, it's kind of been on hold. I know they've had some discussions and some meetings, but once the pandemic started, everything kind of got put on hold, as far as I know. I've not received very many communications. I know the director of High Plains had reached out a couple of times, but with everything happening in our community with COVID, a lot of that was just put to the side. So that may be a discussion that we need to bring back up, but as of right now, it's on hold.
We have no report, we've done nothing, no.
How was the follow-up meeting with the fishing tournament?
Well, there was a, there was a follow-up meeting, and we are looking at June 6th.
7th.
7th. And the only reason that they're looking at those days, that's free fishing weekend. So that seemed to make a lot of sense.
We have another meeting, and Steve and I did not make it for the last, the first meeting. But they do have another meeting coming up at the end of this week, and Steve and I will both be there, as well as Megan had offered to be there. We are, we were going to suggest to them that they change it from a fishing tournament or a fishing day to be in a camp, because part of the new guidelines that the governor put out yesterday has more exceptions for camps. So that allows us to have a day camp for a fishing day camp for the camps.
Manuel, can we call it a fishing derby camp?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do that.
Which allows us to have a 25 per pond, which I think would be a lot more beneficial.
I think so, too.
We generally spoke to Megan this morning about this. The group, they have a pretty good idea of how they want to do this. But if we do the fishing derby camp, we, now we're approved for groups of 25 for a day camp. So if we take 25 at each pond, we can consider that hopefully an independent camp. And then we can at least get 75, is what we're hoping. We're going to present it to Megan for final approval, but we're working on it.
So that's one that, you know, they're looking at doing. And Steve and I met with another group this afternoon that wanted to do a soccer camp here in Lamar, and they're looking at following the same regulations and restrictions, but they're trying to be proactive and reaching out to us first. We've gotten a lot of information, we'll be sending that out to Megan to get her guidance as well. But, so summer's ramping up, and people are trying to find ways for the kids, things to do, so.
You might have to have a golf camp tournament.
A bowling camp.
You know, it's unfortunate, but every time one of these come up, it requires meeting after meeting, and you have to put a proposal together, you have to present a plan to public health. It's.
I was just wondering if that followed the.
Oh, it did, it happened on the 20th, actually, I believe. We have minutes from it and everything, be happy to send it to you. Rick at our park department, he has actually been working with them. We're going to try to work it through the parks, so.
So that's the status on that, and I think it's still moving forward full steam, so hopefully it'll be a great event. Any other questions? None from the community, any from the council members? You know, I mentioned at the beginning that I was thanking everybody in the community for all the hard work, and that we've done a great job as far as keeping the counts down at the hospital and helping them, helping support them so they don't get inundated with illnesses, and everybody doing their part to try to keep, prevent this from spreading. I do thank everybody, like I said earlier, but now's not the time to stop. Now's the time for us to be aware of this, as we start to release some of these regulate restrictions, and we're able to go to the restaurants, and we're able to go shopping at different merchants. Just keep it in mind, and just be safe, that's all, you know, I would suggest and ask for. To do your best to take care of yourself, your family, and your neighbors, and everybody around, so. I appreciate everything, and with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Fair. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any final questions?
Yes.
On the restaurant, on the.
Yes.
Is that 50% or 50 patrons?
50% to 50 patrons.
50% is kind of the general guideline that everybody's working with right now.
Okay. Okay, any other final questions? Seeing none?
I gave my fact sheet to the soccer ladies this afternoon, so they could prepare their plan.
Okay, seeing no other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.